... United States of America, into the Republic which stands no mission under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, John, in public silence. Thank you very much, please see it.
And remember to silence your cellphones if you have them. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through five constitute consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the August twenty-second meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four for human resources includes A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, and B, approval of the new temporary part-time juvenile detention youth worker position. Item five for secondary roads includes A, approval of the permit to work in the right of way for TRC Capital and to direct the chair to sign the permit, and B, approval of the permit to work in the right of way for David Dietrich and to direct the chair to sign the permit. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. Raddick, second by Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item six from the Board of Supervisors, myself. This is an information item, no action can be taken tonight. This is discussion and discussion of and request for updates regarding the law enforcement center construction progress, financial updates, and contractor timeline, and county representation on the LAC Authority. The last public update from the LAC Authority on the opening date is mid-September. County departments and officials have a need to know anything that can be shared. Approximately two weeks ago, I personally invited members of the LAC Authority, Baker Group, project, which is our project manager, and Housman Construction, which is the project contractor, to attend this meeting and give a update to the Board of Supervisors. This was done not to seek gotcha moments, but done with two weeks' advance notice because we need more information, and I believe the Board is right to request that. This did not pan out the way that I hoped. As you can see, no one is attending from these entities. Is that correct? So the record will show that no members of the LAC Authority, the Baker Group, or Housman Construction attended this meeting to give the Board an update on an almost seventy million dollar law enforcement center, first product of its kind, and of tremendous scope and financial importance. I don't think the people missing this meeting are very happy with me holding an open meeting on this topic, but I believe that all my fellow supervisors are unsatisfied with the flow of information from the Authority to the county and also to the public. I understand there are different roles and responsibilities, and certainly there is certainly we need to appreciate the fact that people serving on on that authority are appointed members of elected bodies, which is part of their role, but also there is a member of the public and is doing so voluntarily, and I appreciate that. That is a role that is very difficult to fill, particularly in this community, when negative comments are endless. But we have different roles. The roles and responsibilities of us as supervisors and elected officials is to err on the side of transparency and to be cognizant of the fact that the county bears the financial downside of any further delays, and we have done our part by hiring approximately twenty-one staff members and securing a contract with the U.S. Marshals, which the sheriff may discuss later on in this item. These major issues, these major areas of disagreement and cynicism are unfounded by the Board's willingness to move forward to address the problem. We have secured this contract, we have hired the staff, and now we wait for an update on a on a project that has been delayed and and we are not sure of the of the progress or updates as we are only two weeks out. We also need to know the date as we seek to expend in a responsible manner the opioid funds that the county has received from the state, the federal government. It is unfortunately a wrinkle in the process and a disservice that the Board is forced to have this discussion by itself. We have questions, and we're asking those questions on behalf of the taxpayers and the public, and we're asking them because we don't personally know the answers. That's the rub. So the Board will be hearing from people that we call up that may give us information. Only those people, I think, think that have information to give the Board should be recognized during this item because we are seeking information, because we do not know what we do not know, and there is a significant lead time to be aware of. As we talk about dates, substantial completion is not the same thing as the opening date, it's not the same thing as staff occupied date, not the same thing as open to the public date, not the same thing as open for business, so to speak, and and open to provide the services we're mandated to provide. So with that, because I cannot call upon any of these members in particular, we are just going to discuss as as the Board sees fit, and I'll leave it to you, gentlemen, to call up members that of the county that you would like to hear from that may have some sort of context to provide as we, again, seek to figure out what sort of a date we're looking at and what are the financial and planning implications of that date not being met. I'll recognize Mr. Taylor first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So I just want to make sure, because we've been banding some of this about with the LAC Authority trying to get information, just for the good of the public, people who may not be up to speed. Can you remind the public when the opening date was originally promised for? Was that September fourteenth? Is that your understanding?
Currently, my understanding is if there are no rain days in the contract, it is set to be September fourteenth, but I believe it was previously delayed.
And you've come to find out that September fourteenth is not going to be the date that's going to be open, that it's going to be much later than that, or you're surmising, or we're left to surmise, that we have no idea whether it's one month, two months, four months, eight months, that I just want to make sure that the public has some context to know what it is we're talking about so that when we have a little more clarity if they're just tuning in right now and they haven't been in LAC Authority meetings, they haven't been in Board of Supervisors meetings, so I just want to make sure.
So one reason for this item being on as opposed to not being on, two weeks out from September fourteenth, is that I think we've all heard rumors and we've all heard dates from county employees, city employees, vendors, people that seem to know a little bit more about it than the Board of Supervisors, and those those dates are out there. They're floating around, they're different, they range wildly, and this is not this is not ideal. So this is this is and was an opportunity for those who know the answers to those questions to either tell us the answer to the question or tell us why they cannot tell us and approximate when they can tell us, because there needs to be there needs to be some planning that goes into this date, and it's unfortunate that we don't have that ability right now.
And I guess my only other follow-up question is, what are the financial implications? You mentioned the hiring of twenty-one individuals, but as far as revenue to the county, can you?
Sure.
Get the public or help remind us and get us up to speed on that?
In coordination with Budget Office and the Sheriff's Office, during our last budget cycle, we budgeted for one point two million dollars of revenue for the current fiscal That is something that is going to come out of reserves if it is not met. My understanding of the construction agreement is that it contains provisions for lost revenue past a certain date, but that's just a high-level understanding of the terms, and that's what I can say about that.
So what you're saying is, if we don't have that revenue coming in because we're not open in September or October, whenever it's going to be open, then we're losing that?
Yeah, the LAC Authority bears absolutely no financial responsibility or or risks any financial harm the county does because the county is bankrolling this this building.
And its taxpayers.
And its taxpayers.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Nelson?
At the LAC meeting this afternoon, there was a construction change directive that was approved for some fire alarms that were missed on the in the initial designs and by inspectors, and they said in the meeting today that they expect those to be installed mid-September. So I think that that obviously shows that we will not be in there by the fourteenth, and that was only one change directive. There were several others that they did today that no timeline were given. I'm just kind of parsing the tea leaves on what was said. They are scheduling a walkthrough for a punch list on the twelfth, which is two days prior to the opening. A punch list is typically a list of things that have to be finalized in a project before they can assume completion. On a project of this size, I'm guessing you're talking weeks on a on a punch list. So that's that's what I parsed from the meeting today.
Yeah, this week I was I had I was talking with the city employee, and they were telling me, oh, it's January, it's delayed out to January, and they were like, oh, you know that, right, the Board? And I was like, no, sir. So Chairman, to answer your, to well, to back up what you were saying, people are, we're hearing, I'm hearing information that nonetheless, now the five of us have not heard anything yet, and they're they're assuming we're being updated, or have some are keeping kept in the loop somehow, but I'm I heard that from two different employees. They're saying, they're telling me January, so now whether that's, you know, true, false, you know, in the wind, whatever that is, but that's what I'm hearing. I had citizens, multiple citizens in the city and rural friends that were asking me for dates, they were looking forward to this meeting today to be supportive of the sheriff, the new G O., you know, and told them sorry, and they were very disappointed that they couldn't get an update, so that's all I have to report.
I guess as far as, you know, my perspective initially, one of the hardest things to do is to get the referendum passed and move along, and then when we had to follow the code and create the authority, I could not be on it because I didn't live in the rural area. You know, and on a construction project like this, I guess, you know, you'd like to have a little more oversight, but technically by the, you know, the legal route that was taken, it's it's an authority project, and the county is helping to finance it. So I think it would make sense for us to have a representative appointed from the Board of Supervisors on the authority from here on out so that we're better informed. It's not just the Board of Supervisors, but obviously Judge Todd is here, the judge's office and their staff, the attorney's office and their staff, and of course, the sheriff's office and their staff, and, you know, how we're going to have to move all our current occupants across the street out to that facility, and the plan was to do it in a day's time. A lot of these timeline things are very important for us all to know, and it's just about openness in the community, hey, what this is what this is what's happening, this is what's going on. There's no reason that, you know, if there's a delay, just come out and say it, you know, and and let's end rumors, because I don't want to hear, oh, it's just November fifteenth, oh, it's, no, it's going to be middle of January. I don't need to hear rumors. And of course, the best way to end rumors is just by coming out and saying what you know. So I do think as a Board, we should probably move forward and appoint our rural resident onto the LAC Authority, but as far as any questions from anybody else or any information from anybody else, I wouldn't mind hearing it.
Yeah, and on that note, I'm not sure the legislature contemplated this particular use of the joint authority as far as the size and scope of the law enforcement center. It was the avenue we took to address a problem that everyone agreed existed, but it's it's something that we are stuck in. There is no legal ability to increase the members of the authority. I know there's that classic issue that even three-member Boards of Supervisors across the state have where two of them can't really talk, but there have been, you know, certainly a lot of meetings lately from the authority, but as we as we approach, it's it's very important to be up to speed, and I the county as a whole hasn't received any sort of public project update since the beginning of the year, which, you know, which is which is not how perhaps elected officials would approach it like us, and again, that's our role and responsibility. So as alluded to Supervisor Nelson, per the code, is the only one of us that would qualify to be appointed from the Board, living outside the the county city seat. So he's been able to attend the authority meetings as our liaison and report back what he can, but he's not able to be involved in closed sessions, and therefore, our county attorney's office may not have as much of a handle on what the legal issues are and who is involved and how there will be recourse, because we're very interested in recourse, we're very interested in in damages, we're very interested in terms being the being the ones that are writing the checks and sending the money from the federal government, from our taxpayers. And so I do think if he is willing, it is something the Board should consider, particularly because we don't know how long this process is going to drag out. If it was going to if it was going to approach substantial completion in two weeks, I would assume that we would have scheduled a some sort of an opening by now, some sort of a gathering. But that's just the thing, you know, you can, if you're if you build roofs and you took the old roof off and there's, you know, two patches of roof on there and there's leaves everywhere, and someone asks you, is it going to be done in a couple hours? You might you might not, you know, you might just want to be honest and say, you know, based on my experience building roofs, this is probably going to be a while. You know, that doesn't necessarily say you're locking yourself into, you know, making an excuse for anyone legally, you're just giving your professional opinion, and that's really what we're asking here, is not for a legal opinion, just a professional opinion from the people that we've put in the place to, you know, the experts and the people we put in place to facilitate this. So, you know, that's another thing that was, you know, related to, you know, Mr. Nelson potentially being on is that we'd have that have that connection in case there is an extended protracted issue.
So I appreciate you, Mr. Chair, looking into that, because initially, I don't like three-member boards, and I think in retrospect, that's something that if we could have increased, I would say I would like to see the the mayor and our chairman on the authority, but in lieu of that, you're suggesting that potentially Supervisor Nelson could be appointed on behalf of the county as the rural citizen? Is that what I'm, I just want to make sure I'm picking up what you're laying down?
As the Board's appointee.
Right, right, okay. And I understand, I think, you know, their chair, Ron Wick, citizen Rocky DeWitt, and City Councilman Dan Moore were each invited, and while I understand they're facing some difficult challenges, forgive the double negative, we can't not know. We've got to know, we have over twenty individuals who've been hired, and I'm assuming we're not going to let any of them go, even if it's two months, four months, six months. And so in lieu of that, we have to know what we're going to make up as far as a budget shortfall. We have to know what we're going to make up in terms of revenue, and unfortunately, we kind of act like there's ninety-nine problems and and we're not one of them. We got to figure out how we can get that information so we can make decisions. So I look forward to a future item. I was wondering if I could just ask, who here attended the law enforcement center authority meeting today? Okay, so you two? And we weren't able to all attend, obviously, to have a quorum. Do you know the amount of dollars in terms of change orders potentially that were approved today? I know you mentioned one of them.
So they had some change orders where they actually took work away that we're not going to do, so there was there were some credits and debits, and I think roughly it was like twenty-two thousand dollars and change is what the what the change orders were today.
Based on things that they're not doing that they were going to do originally?
Yeah, things that they're adding and things that they're not going to do.
Okay. One of the things that I just want to make sure that's said publicly as we look at this, and I know this isn't directly our item right now, but I believe that there's about seven-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars that can be spent before they exceed the amount of money that the county has obligated to these projects without exceeding the bond issue. So I just want that to be on the record, and I want to make sure that that's not exceeded as we're still looking for that amount of information weekly. I believe there's an expectation of a certain amount of money coming back from deobligating some funds, and so more on that in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
In regards to change orders, I think I've I've maybe missed one LAC meeting since assuming this role in January, I think, but there's pretty, I mean, that's the bulk of almost every meeting is change orders, you know, whether it's they're taking something off, putting something on. I mean, it's a very large project, so there's going to be lots of things coming and going. I just didn't want anybody to think that this was like the first time, you know, that they've had a change order. That's not the case, but yeah, when they talk about, you know, putting the bars and the vents and then the the fire alarm systems, I think they're going to be well into September or the end of September, just on those two things, and I think there's a lot of other things left to do out there, so.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Venger?
No, not this moment.
Well, and we really are, sorry, did you have anything else?
Well, I was just going to ask, can we call on a couple of county staff?
Yeah, I'll do that in a second.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, people can go to the LAC meetings, those are public meetings, and people have, and that's encouraged. That's where these discussions would ideally take place and and certain answers would be received. But another reason we're having this open item today is that we not only want to hear from the groups that chose not to attend, but also our own county employees and elected officials, because we need to have some open discussions and plans as a as a Board and as a and and do so openly, so we're we're so we're not being untoward and and having any sort of role in obfuscating the date as we approach it. So with that, may I call you up Sheriff Chad Sheehan? I suppose you're free to give any sort of update you'd like, and then we can ask you any questions we would like.
No one has attempted to muzzle me, so that has worked favorably in their on their behalf. So let me start by thanking the Board for being agreeing in the vision that we had to be prepared to hit the ground running mid-September with being fully staffed, to adequately staff the federal inmates that we were in the process of working towards but didn't have an agreement. We've been continually working, not just me, but Captain Harlow, Chief Wingert, a lot of people behind the scenes have been working on trying to get this process done so that we would be ready September, mid-September, September fourteenth. I'm happy to say that we finalized the agreement with the U.S. Marshals yesterday, we I signed it yesterday, they sent it back signed today, so we have it, it takes effect September first. That relationship building and stuff has been going on for probably at least a year, year and a half, maybe a couple years. I've been in office now for two years and eight months, probably probably two and a half years it's been going on, and I think we have we have as good of an agreement as we could possibly get in the in the climate of the federal government and spending and shortfalls and all the stuff that's going on. So I think we're we're set up and prepared to do well for for what we're prepared to do. Go ahead.
If I could just ask you, you don't have to give more information than you're comfortable with, but is this rate and agreement superior to our current agreement?
Yes, yes. The bed rate, yes. We increased the bed rate, I think, with, so they kind of hold their cards close to the vest. I think we will, if we're not the highest bed rate in in this area of responsibility, we if I would assume we're at the top if we're not the top. And we increased our hourly guard rate and transportation rate. I was talking to the chief, I forgot to get the old agreement to bring it over here today, but I think we're somewhere around thirty dollars an hour, and we're up to forty-five dollars an hour. So we increased our our transportation rate and our guard rate for our staff that's transporting the inmates to the hospital or to the federal courthouse or wherever it might be. We increased that rate somewhere around fifteen dollars an hour, which will be beneficial, but we don't have room in the facility we're in right now. So we are not going to be able to increase the number of inmates that we can accept from the federal government until we get into the new facility. It will take effect September first, so it'll have some very minor increase for us, but we're only housing between five and ten inmates at a time right now. The estimate that I gave Dennis, or that we we kind of came up with in estimating that the one point two million, basically, if we're if we're going to house the seventy-five inmates a day roughly, that they estimated they would be housing in our facility, we're going to be losing somewhere around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month in revenue from those inmates, and it's hard to tell, I can't really with without having the experience behind me to know how much of the transportation duties we would be doing, it's hard to, but there would be additional revenue there. There's also additional revenue because of commissary, the things that a hundred extra, seventy-five to a hundred extra inmates will be buying on a daily basis, so there's revenue there that we will be out. And so every month, it starts to fall short. I did I did talk to the marshal today to let him know that we were going to be having this meeting, I did not want him becoming nervous watching from Cedar Rapids, thinking, oh, my gosh, is this whole thing going to come to a crashing halt? And the answer is, you know, of course not. We just don't know when we're going to be open. Getting to that point, I mean, unless you have questions about the finances, I would estimate that if we if we would have known that we weren't going to open September and we delayed hiring, we started hiring back in January. And again, I'll go back to negotiated contracts and stuff that you guys did before. We were having difficulty two years ago getting enough qualified applicants to hire one or two people at a time. Was it maybe less than a month ago? We were fully staffed, we had had we had everybody hired, and of course, people leave, things happen internally with employees and issues happen, and additional people leave. I think we need to hire two or three now again, but we had everybody hired because of the raises and the things, people, we were getting good qualified applicants. But I I estimate if we would have known, and maybe it's unfair to say they they knew in January, but if we could have delayed things, we probably could have saved the county, you know, fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars in this fiscal budget that we're in now, because we would have delayed hiring people, knowing that we weren't going to be ready at a certain point, which was a guessing game for us. You put faith in us, gave us the authorization to do that, and all of that was based on this mid-September opening. I was at a meeting, I believe it was August first or second, out at the new facility with all the entities that you invited here that aren't here today, and at some point towards the end of the meeting, I just simply asked the question, when can you give us a date? I need to know when. We have, we put a moratorium on vacation from mid-September and through, like, what, I think, through October? We weren't allowing anybody to take vacation. We weren't allowing anybody to take vacation. The sergeants were to deny all vacation because when we were ready to go, we needed to be ready to go. We needed all hands on deck. Um, they told us that day, two weeks. It would take them a couple of weeks to figure out a date, and in two weeks, they would give us a date. And two weeks, that's been, you know, a month ago. And still nothing. Uh, yesterday, I was at a, at a meeting, um, on courthouse security. And again, uh, I just simply raised the question, you know, do we have a date? Do we know when there'll be a date? And, uh, we're told that they're advised not to, not to discuss, by their legal counsel, they're advised not to discuss a date. So that's some of the finances. I don't know if you have any questions about any of the other financial impact or revenue?
The agreement with the marshals actually being signed and executed is, was probably dependent upon seeing a completion date at the end of the tunnel, so to speak. They wouldn't sign before.
Well, we were due to renegotiate the IGA, or I think the, we were due to renegotiate it and have a new one, I think in June. But, uh, dealing with the federal government is not as easy as you would hope it would be. I think, uh, anybody that's ever done that knows, and it's a slow process. So what I was hoping we were going to have done in June or July, we finally got it done yesterday. And it wasn't all on them. Some of it was, we wanted to be able to have the county attorney's office look at the contract and make sure that what we were assigning, we could live with. And so I'm not, I'm not blaming them, it's just, it was just the process. But it wasn't, for me, it wasn't that big a deal. I just wanted to make sure it was done by mid-September so that when we hit the ground, the new ground, we would have this new agreement in place, which we have.
We certainly did work well together. The board funded your ability to, promised the ability to house these inmates, and then you secured disagreement. And just to reiterate, you know, that was one of the main, you know, reasons, reasons of the, you know, detractors and cynics and critics is you don't have a contract. Well, we have a contract before the current substantial completion date. It's, we have it. It's done. So now we're definitely looking to hit the ground running. And this is why, another reason we're having this meeting is we, we are ready. You know, the county is ready. So, sorry to get on the soapbox, but.
I think one of the things I, we're trying to demonstrate is the people in this room have done their jobs and tried to do it well. And I, I just want to commend the sheriff's office in terms of, I mean, you've secured all the personnel to be able to do this. You've secured all the contracts. Everything that you said would happen has happened. And I had somebody ask me at one time, well, have you gone out to the, have you gone out to the site? I'm not allowed to go out to the site, even though I'm on the Board of Supervisors. So I want people to know it's not from a lack of trying that the members of this elected body aren't able to have that information. Um, and with that, I wanted to just ask, in terms of, we talked about September fourteenth, what does the process look like? Let's just say, Sheriff, that they gave you a date of December first, okay? We can open it on December first. What does that mean for you in terms of substantial completion versus move-in date? And, and my follow-on will be, um, maybe for Judge Todd, if, what is jury notification? Because I know those go out, and that's a process too. So I just want to make sure that we understand, uh, it's not like December first and then December second, we all move in.
That's not, yep, that's not going to happen. So the, it's my, and, and, you know, uh, it's my understanding the substantial completion date means that, uh, basically it gives you a certificate of occupancy. And if I misstate anything, Tony or anybody can correct me, but it doesn't mean you get to move in that day. So the owner then has the checklist, the punch list, and there's, the contractor has thirty days to complete that, uh, punch list. We made the decision months ago, six months ago probably, that we were not going to move anybody physically into the building until the punch list was absolutely completed. We did not want to have inmates in sections and somebody have to come and grind down a, a, a burr on a metal railing. I mean, it just, it would be a nightmare to move anybody in, to have the courts, you know, have somebody come in and fixing a ceiling tile when there's supposed to be a jury trial going on. So, um, from our perspective, we made that decision long ago that we would not move anybody in until the punch list was all completed and done. And they have thirty days, it's my understanding they have thirty days to do that after the substantial completion. We also, we were hoping that we would be able to do some training during that time, but we estimate it's going to take us four to six weeks to do some training with our staff inside this new facility. It's new, it's, it's different, brand new, it's not what we're used to. It's going to take some time to train and get people in there. And we've coordinated with a nonprofit group, we, we're not prepared to announce anything, but we're coordinating with a nonprofit group to raise money that we will allow citizens to have the opportunity to, um, pay to have other citizens booked in the new jail for training for our staff so that we'll actually, so that we can have the transparency, people can come and look at it and do. I mean, we, there have been a lot of moving pieces behind the scenes. But I would estimate if the substantial completion date was the fourteenth, it would probably be at least six to ten weeks before we would be in after a substantial completion date. Um, just to make sure that the punch list was done, everything was done, we were trained, we can get people moved in, we've got to move it, there's pieces of the kitchen that we're going to have to move that when that's done, we're gonna, you know, we're going to have to figure out another way to feed the inmates for the week or, I don't know how long it's going to take to move things. So there's some things that we, you know, we know we're not going to be able to answer till we get in the mix, right?
So do you think it's realistic if it was September fourteenth, which we know that it's not? Uh, if it was September fourteenth, then it would be the last week of November, first week of December?
We were hoping we'd be in before Thanksgiving.
Okay. But you're going to need at least.
Yep, so we were hoping to have November, uh, December, uh, revenue. And that's if we could do some of that training during the, during that thirty-day punch list. Because it's fine to do the training while they're in, excuse me, while they're in fixing things. So we, I will tell you that we lifted the, we lifted the moratorium on the, on the vacations. We told the sergeants, go ahead and allow people to have vacations. We have no expectation we're going to be in anytime, uh, in the month of September. I, you know, I think, I don't have anything to, uh, say definitively, but my thought is that we're, we're tentatively preparing to move sometime in the month of December or January, is my hope. But I don't have, really don't know.
Sheriff, a question for you. Is there anything in the, in this contract you signed, um, with the, with the federal government? Is there any provisions that, is there a timeline or if you can't meet their needs, the contract is no void or is it disregarding?
No, it's, it's an intergovernmental, uh, agreement. So either party can pull out of the agreement, basically for any reason with a certain notice. Um, so we could pull out if we needed to, they could pull out. I, we make the most sense for the marshals to hold their people in Woodbury County. We're closest to the courthouse. Um, we already handle all the, the, the high-profile inmates or the unruly inmates. A lot of the, the outlying jails that might be a little smaller don't have, uh, the, the specialty of staffing that we would have. And so, I mean, I, I don't foresee any issues. I'm very confident that once they, once they get in, they're going to see what a benefit it is to have the number of people in our facility, that that number will only continually grow. Um, they're not the, this, this Northern District of Iowa is not the only district for the US Marshals that is like, um, extremely in need of bed space. You have Nebraska and South Dakota, so the Omaha office and the Sioux Falls office. And, and my hope is that eventually we, we become kind of an area hub, um, for, for the, the federal marshals.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
The only thing, I want to be fair, I want to be fair to the Baker Group, I want to be fair to the Law Enforcement Center Authority. They have been, they, and, and Hausman for that matter, I, I don't have much interaction with Hausman, but the Law Enforcement Center Authority has been very gracious with us. They have been, um, while they hold the purse string, I'm, not the purse strings, they hold control of the building of the building, you all hold the purse strings. They have allowed our input, but the, but the reality is, they wouldn't have, they don't, it seems that it's a, it's a very, I inherited this, so I can't complain too much, but it seems that it's a, a unique, uh, problem that the people paying to live in the house have no say in the building of the house. It's, it's a pretty unique circumstance. But I don't want to, I don't want to paint the wrong picture. The Baker Group, Shane Albright, um, the Law Enforcement Center Authority, they have been, they have been great to work with. It's just on this one particular thing, um, they're not able to give us the date. But I also don't think they are in a position to give us the date. I don't think they have the information either. So I just, I just want to be, be clear that I don't, you know? And I understand, I was told that they were advised by counsel not to be here, you know? I get that, I mean, I understand it, it's, it is frustrating. It's frustrating for me, I know it's got to be frustrating for you all. I'm sure it's frustrating for the public, but hopefully, hopefully we can just get through this, and get this done, because I think once it's going to be done, it's going to be a good thing, um, for everybody. I know it's going to be a safer place for our staff, a safer place for the, for the people that are housed there. And remember, most of everybody that we have housed there, they're innocent until proven guilty. And so we want to provide as safe a place as we can for them. Um, and I know that this new facility is going to do that, so, but thank you all.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I, I do want to thank you for saying it in that regards too, because, uh, you know, while it might seem like this is somewhat adversarial in nature, I don't feel like we're coming across that way. I, I hope not anyway to those on the, uh, Law Enforcement Center Authority. But even just coming and giving an answer like you had given there, like we don't have an answer on the date because we can't give it to you, is an answer that could have been nice to have heard for the public, for the media. Uh, because I get asked about it at work probably almost daily. Hey, are they going to open that jail on time? Hey, I, I heard this, you know? And I hate to kind of be the, the one that says, you know what? As a member of the Board of Supervisors, we don't have any answers either. And was it you that alluded to, no, we, we can't go onto the site ourselves. Uh, it would be nice to have a tour of the site, um, even if it's escorted by the authority and the contractor, I don't care who, but, uh, those kind of things, information is important in our line of what we do. And of course, you know, it's very important what you do. You know, I guess if you're in the public and you're observing things, you know, from when this project started to, to where it is now, from the referendum, uh, you know, we had, almost immediately upon getting bids, you know, during COVID, there was thirty to forty, forty percent inflation in a lot of the costs. So that was some of the first news people got. Which I, I would commend the Board of Supervisors for working hard and using different funding sources, whether it be reserves or ARPA or, uh, just strategic spending to, to make sure that we accounted for that increase. The staffing study was incorrect. You know, that was a, a free study provided, but, uh, you know, when you bring up hiring twenty total, what, was it? Twenty-one, I thought it was nineteen, but I thought it was fifteen plus one, plus three.
Plus three, plus three.
Plus three, okay, so, um, you know, the staffing study was incorrect. And that was something we hired a professional to do, and it was wrong. We had a wall fall down, that was bad news. But there was an investigation found about why it didn't supposedly cause any delays, didn't supposedly, uh, you know, cause any financial hardship, which, uh, you know, the contractor that made the mistake is the one that pays for their mistake. But now we have the opening date questions, which I think to us is actually really bad news because we need to know. You know, and I, I do want to commend the LEC Authority. I do appreciate what they're doing. And I do want to commend the Board of Supervisors because we did account for the inflation. And I was, I don't know if you got that number, Dennis, of what the original, um, referendum called for, or was it a, what, what was the increase?
Well, the, the original estimate was forty-three million.
No, I'm saying for the original, um, increase in, um, the levy that we were expected to see.
Around sixty-five cents per thousand, based on fifty-point-three million under two different bond issues.
And that was the first two years, wasn't it? And then it was like three dollars per thousand, I thought it was quite significant.
No, it didn't go up that high. It had been around sixty-five cents throughout the whole project.
It was around sixty-five cents per thousand, and we ended up with zero increase. So we've been doing a lot of things as a Board of Supervisors to avoid, uh, you know, having this be any kind of burden. But there's a lot of rumors, there's a lot of conjecture, and there's a lot of negativity because of things that were out of our control. And, and technically, I, I would say this is also out of our control, but we would like to at least have answers.
Yeah, there's been, as you said, a lot of bad news. And, and today we have a major piece of good news with the intergovernmental agreement being signed and, and being better than the one we have right now, but we need a facility to operate within.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, do we have any information from our building, uh, Services Superintendent or from Judge Todd, if he'd want to speak to the jury notification process that would help? I'm appreciative of getting the sheriff's best guess or surmising, but I didn't know if that would be helpful or not.
Kenny, are you comfortable giving a estimate based upon your job with the county?
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services Director. I can't give a, anything like an official timeline of sorts. Just, I would have to base anything I say on past, uh, projects and experience. And in doing so, um, I can tell you what I would say is this project will not finish on time. Again, this is based on my experience with other projects I've worked on. They, uh, I do not believe that, uh, we are ready for punch lists. There are some areas in that facility that may be nearing that point. But this is a huge project. And, uh, from what I see, some areas are, are certainly farther ahead than other areas are. Um, but that's, but with that said, we have to occupy almost all of these areas at one time, so it really doesn't matter if one area is ahead of another or not. I, I, I would, my thoughts reflect similar to what the sheriff expressed on timelines. I, I truly believe that we might be in a December or later occupancy. I think that our, our construction company is working very, very hard, um, to, to shorten that timeline and, and to make that completion, um, as short as possible. But I also believe that there is going to be a huge punch list on this project that's going to take some time. Uh, again, uh, after substantial completion is done, that's when the punch list is, is drawn out and, and the contractor has, uh, a month to make those corrections. Those corrections then again have to be satisfactory. And so just because it says they, it's, you say they have a month to complete it, doesn't mean it's going to be completely done in a month. It may be longer, they might be come back and say, hey, that was good, but now you've got to correct it twice because it's not good enough.
Kenny, just in my limited experience with the schools, one of the things that I know is that there's no late starts, right? If they're building a school, school's going to be open by the time school starts. No ifs, ands, or buts. We're not going to delay kids coming into a new elementary, right? And this, I understand that this has moved back maybe two, three, four, or five months, we don't know. Do, do you know, in your knowledge, does the state have to come in in addition to the punch list and say, we have to inspect before you open any new jail facility? And make sure that security systems, lockdown, or the federal government, if they're going to house federal prisoners? Are you aware of that?
Absolutely.
That is the case?
Absolutely, yes.
And I'm assuming that that's not just a twenty-four-hour, hey, we're calling you and the next day you show up kind of thing? That there may be some time- That there may be some time where people are coming in to do that as well? Is that a correct assumption?
Yes. State Corrections Inspector will have to come in.
And then he or she will have to say, if there are deficiencies, hey, your control sequence in this system, or this doesn't meet. And so not only is it your punch list, does this meet your substantial completion as the entity? But there's also another entity that's going to have to say, yeah, you may have thought that that was copacetic, but we need you to do these other eight things. Is that?
Yes. One thing I can say, a couple of things I can speak to that, is we've tried throughout this whole project to address anything that may come up in that manner. Ahead of time, as, as much as we could, of course, something could be picked on. But, so that's one part of it. We've tried to do our job there. Hopefully something doesn't come up. However, with that said, there is, from what I understand, one inspector that does the final inspection, and he does not necessarily come running if you say you're ready on Monday. Since he does have a big area to cover, that, from what I understand, Chad, that takes some time to set up.
Thank you. He was on, he was on site one time. It's been several months ago. I, I couldn't even tell you when it was. It's been several months ago. I don't, I don't remember if you were there when, when Delbert came and, and, but you're correct. Everybody can look at it and say it's good to go. And if he says no, it's no. He is, I mean, we could have our offices there, and the courts could be there, but he has the final say on inmates being in that facility. Yep.
Any other questions for Kenny?
Kenny, when we looked at the referendum initially, and we looked at the alternative of repairing the existing jail facility, our estimates at the time were about twenty-two million just to stay in our building that would increase no numbers. Do you believe that that would have followed that same thirty to forty percent inflation, and now would be looking at twenty-eight to thirty-one million in cost to fix that facility?
Absolutely. Especially with the, the concern then was, and still is today, the deterioration that takes place. It's almost daily. To give you just a quick example, we lost a air compressor here about two weeks ago. I didn't replace it. It's about a thirty-two thousand dollar replacement. Things like that just continue to happen.
And then if we had done that project and pursued rebuilding the old LEC, and we were having to contract with Des Moines or some other larger jail facility to house inmates, and had to keep them there for four or five months longer because the project wasn't done on time, we would have been looking at a lot more expense and downfall to the taxpayer doing that.
That cost would be staggering.
Bring this up, because the point is, we're still not in a bad position compared to what we could be had we gone down the road of trying to rebuild or refurbish the old facility. And of course, the worst case scenario is if we had done nothing. So, like I said, I do want to kind of reiterate that I think what we've done is the right thing. I think the LEC is doing the best they can as the authority to get things done. It's just, we work in a public avenue. We can't all meet in, in private and discuss things. So this has to be done open and public. And I guess as far as the answer, you know, I appreciate your opinion. You know, I think when we did the budget, we did it as kind of a worst case scenario. We didn't give as much revenue as we could have had. But I do think if it's not open by January fifteenth, we're kind of in a scary situation then, because then we're digging into reserves. But, you know, I, I would say we do have reserves as a county. I don't intend to use them for this. So I would encourage everybody involved, please get it done as quickly to the timetable as originally agreed. And, yeah, thanks for your comments there, Kenny.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Kenny. And I would just add, you know, any, any failure of the contractor does not necessarily reflect blame upon the LEC Authority. We simply need to know where the accountability is. And it, it should be to some degree with the authority. That's why they're called the authority. Let's segue if, Judge, if you don't mind, just answering that question Mr. Taylor had on, on jury notification. And I know, you know, as a board, we also need to provide you with security as far as your courtrooms and access. And the county needs to come to a plan with, with the LEC Authority on that. So the board also needs to be cognizant of the fact that there will be cost to budget for, just as we hired, budgeted to hire staff ahead of time as, as correctional officers. We need to budget equipment and, and, and potential courthouse security, or court security staff as well. So turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Supervisor Taylor, far as juries are concerned, the process the courts typically use for notifying jurors starts about ninety days out before their service. And that begins by, and the reason I know this first is my wife got a notification here a couple of months ago. But about ninety days out from your service, you receive a postcard in the mail basically with this information upon it, telling you that you need to fill out the questionnaire that all jurors have to do. But also gives them additional information about what their term is going to be, where they're going to need to report, and things of that nature. So from that perspective, the court's going to need to know about ninety days ahead of time what information goes on that original card. Now, are there ways to adjust that? Sure, when they call to report and call in, do we have to go? We can have it on the voicemail, but that's not ideal to be telling people that. It's going to be basically ninety days leeway. Now, when the project started, the courts never anticipated being out there operating at the same time the sheriff first goes out there. We've always understood that the sheriff's going to have to move out there, go through the training he described ahead of time, before he's even ready to have inmates be at the facility. There's no point for us being there to operate while he's training and there are no inmates. It defeats the purpose of having the judges, having to transport inmates from downtown out there for hearings. So we always intended to begin our operations when the jail was ready, when, when the inmates were there, when the sheriff can just transport them down to the courtrooms. So that was kind of contingent upon when the sheriff can get in, the time it takes for him to train, time it takes for him to get the inmates out there, et cetera. So even with the September fourteenth, original date, or maybe this first amended date, whatever that might be, I'm not privy to those discussions. We didn't intend to be out there in September. I was going back several months, probably anticipating that the courts would likely be operating end of December, beginning of January, which would give the sheriff the time he needed to train, transport, et cetera. With it not being ready in September, apparently, obviously that's going to get probably pushed back for us as well, which creates problems besides just the jury notifications. There's a couple of other issues we have to face. One of the big things that happen in the Law Enforcement Center every day are people appearing on citations, traffic tickets, whether they be county, or, or city, or even state. If you get pulled over, and fortunately I haven't been pulled over for a long time, haven't gotten a citation for a long time. But at the bottom of the citation, it tells the individual getting it where they're supposed to report, what date and time. So those citations have to be changed according to when we know we're going to be there. So we know where to tell people to, to report. And the best information I have on that issue is it's about a six to eight week leg time for scheduling appearances when an officer writes a ticket. You usually report in about six to eight weeks. So we'll need to have a pretty good idea when we're going to be there, to know when we need to change the dates on those citations. And I mentioned this to a few people, that, you know, there's probably going to be a little overlap from when that citation date changes to when we may actually be able to be there. So there may be a week, or two, or three, depending upon the circumstances, where we need the courtroom still at the LEC for people who have received citations with the date to tell them to come here, where we can still operate while the other facility is already open and going. There may just be a tiny overlap there. So we're, you can anticipate I'll be coming with that request, once we know what all these dates are going to be, once we've changed the citations. Hopefully for permission to leave the facility across the street open for a week or two to satisfy that, that overlap. The third thing, and equally important from the court's perspective, is obviously the county's paying for most of the facility. They're paying for the building, paying for the bench in the courtrooms, the tables, the pews, you know, all those type of things where people sit. But the state also has an obligation to then furnish our chambers and our, our offices. We have to order furniture and have that delivered and have that installed. We have to have our IT people out there installing CIT equipment, you know, our video equipment, all those type of things. That requires notification as well. District Court Administrators, all the equipment's identified, not all the equipment, but all the furniture's identified. We know exactly what we're going to get. We know exactly who we're going to order it from. We have a pretty good idea what it's going to cost. The question though is what date do we order it? We order it today, it's going to be delivered on a certain date. Facility's not ready, we have no place to put it. You know, the, the judicial branch doesn't have facilities to store things. You know, so we're really in a kind of a tight bind there, that we need to have similar information that you knew, so we know what date that order for the furniture needs to go in, so it can be delivered in a timely fashion.
Is there any option for you to use county space, or not really?
Well, if there's county space available, I'm, I'm assuming so, but I don't know about as far as moving it then. You know, obviously the vendor we're going to purchase the equipment, or the furniture from, will deliver it right to the LEC, set it up. If we're not ready to move in, then who's going to?
That's a good point, though, because all, all county departments are dealing with that issue, but you especially.
Right. We don't, we don't have our own employees, our own people designed and designated for that purpose. So we, we're anxiously awaiting these notifications, too, so we know when to go. Now, from the big picture, my concern is probably a little different than yours. We can operate today. We're operating today here in this facility. We're operating across the street. We can do that indefinitely. But we still need to, it's not going to be indefinite. It's going to have to, we're going to have to move. And, but with, there's a lot of these other things that we have to take care of as well for the transition to be hopefully as smooth as possible. And I echo what the sheriff said, that the authority and the Baker Group have been very open with us. They did allow myself and some members of the court administration to tour the facility two or three months ago. We asked to go out again, we're told no, because I think that's just too much work, too much distraction to have big groups of people going out there all the time. I had asked that our district associate judges tour it, because they're the ones that are going to be there primarily. And again, we were told no, because again, the distraction, I think they're feeling the heat to get the project done, and they don't want to be distracted by people going through it. They have to be escorted, they have to have their hard hats, they have to have everything. So I, I get that. I get that. But they've been open, you know, cars asking those questions of how do we want the courtroom laid out? How do we, where do we want the IT, you know, outlet box, or whatever. I don't know the correct terminology, but they've been very open with us as far as how they could best meet our needs from that perspective. So I, I don't have any complaints from, from that perspective. It is just a little frustrating not knowing when it's all going to happen. And then from the last thing you mentioned, Chairman, with a new facility and the Law Enforcement Center going to be our criminal hub for court services, the courthouse here is going to be where we're going to do civil matters. We do feel it's very critical that we have metal detectors and those type of things at that facility. Right now, we just have the one that's upstairs, and I'm sure the sheriff will fill you in at a later date about that. It's old equipment. It's functional, but for how long, who knows? But I, I, obviously as a member of the courts, I would encourage that the board approve that type of equipment at both facilities, here at the main courthouse, continue it here, as well as obviously at the new facility. And that'll obviously, as you know, come with a cost. But I think it's a cost that's very much needed and necessary, not only for the protection of the courts and the court staff, but for the public as well, who are going to be out there using that facility.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, thank you very much for that information. Is there any equipment, or any things that are proprietary, or that you know of that would take longer than eight to ten weeks as far as being ordered and say, you know? And I, and I guess my concern is, the sheriff alluded to, we're going to need ten weeks. And if you say there's something that's, this could be twelve, fourteen, sixteen weeks, my worry is that we're going to flip-flop in such a way that we're going to actually start having to transport people back here in order to, because we're not ready to go there, if that makes sense?
I, I don't think that's going to be a problem. Because as far as like, the only thing that could play into that would be the, the ordering the furniture. But I think our intention is, is probably to order once we have the substantial compliance or substantial completion date, you know, before they start doing their punch list work. Because I do think it's going to be an eight or ten week delivery leg to get the furniture there. But that should all time out pretty well, assuming the punch list doesn't get done a lot quicker than we anticipate. And listening to Kenny, that's not going to happen. It's probably going to be longer than we anticipate. So I don't foresee that as being an, an issue. The only place where I see there might be a little overlap is again on the timing of the citations and the notification for where people need to go. Depending upon how those dates fall, how, what date we could actually move in there, again, there may be a couple week window where I'm going to ask for this facility to stay open. But that won't be for transporting inmates back. That'll be for people reporting on citations. So a, a judge would come down here at one o'clock in the afternoon and do the traffic arrangements for those people that were told to be here, and everything else will be going on out there. So there wouldn't be that transportation issue for that type of thing.
Thank you. Judge?
You bet. Thank you.
I want to add that no matter how much the board knows about the project as supervisors, even individually, and I'm just speaking for myself, but I think I'm speaking for the board, so correct me if I'm wrong, we want the public to know the basic facts, regardless of what we personally know. And I think in, in regards to the statement by the sheriff, who, who is speaking on hearsay about the authority, and again, that's why we, I, I wish they were here, as far as legal counsel being invoked, perhaps to not attend or speak, I, I don't see how that passes the smell test. And, and I don't want that to be a, considered a reasonable fallback, because if we think about it, it's not that difficult for an attorney to advise you to say less as opposed to say more. But again, we have a different role as supervisors and, and to be, you know, transparent with the public. It's, if I asked Joshua, and I said, hey, Joshua, next meeting's a big meeting, I think I want to leave all my opinions out of it. I don't want to speak anecdotally. I don't want to give my opinions. I, I would just like to vote yea or nay, and I'd like to make like a clam. Would that lessen my legal exposure? And the answer is always, of course. It's, the less you say, you know, the less exposure you have. But as far as admitting that a building is not complete, and when you might expect it to be complete, I don't see how that jeopardizes any legal case that you may have, that the building be complete on a certain date. It's just simply your opinion.
I just want to add, if I may.
Yeah.
I, I concur with that, and I also want to commend our chairman for putting this on, because I know there was some pressure maybe to leave this off. But I think we've taken more time on the single agenda item than any non-solar or wind thing that we've had talked about in the last year and a half. And I think it's a good thing, though, because we are trying to give you all the information that we have. And so this is the sixty-five minutes that we know. We wish there was more, but this is everything that we can give to you as a public. Thank you.
Yeah, and all these things would, I guarantee you, these things would come out during board concerns and citizen concerns, so I prefer it to come out as an ordered agenda item. With that, does the board have any particular questions on, related to finance with Dennis Beller? Do we have that answered?
I would just like to know in a subsequent meeting, and it doesn't need to be for today, there's some information that I think that you can say, this is the amount of money that is total that the LEC Authority can spend, the amount of money that's been either obligated, or has been spent at this point, and what that balance is. I'd just like that delivered as an informational item during the next meeting. Thank you.
Similar to the presidential debates, where if your name is invoked, you get a thirty-second rebuttal. Mr. Nelson, your name was invoked earlier about being appointed to the LEC Authority. Since that might be an issue... Since that might be an issue going forward in a consideration of the board, do you have any thoughts on on that?
I don't have any reservations. I think that, um, if there is going to be some sort of legal recourse here, I think it's pertinent that this board is involved with that. As you said, I've been the liaison since, um, I was put on this board in January, and I've been attending all the meetings. And Dennis and I talk regularly about this stuff, and I've talked with Ron and Dan and Rocky and Shane several times. And, you know, and we've, we've had lots of meetings through the, through the months, so I, I mean, I would be very comfortable doing that. Happy to serve.
Does the board have any concluding thoughts? Does anyone in the audience know when the jail will be open? Again, this is to receive information. It's an open item. Maybe someone knows. All right. Appreciate it. Moving on to item seven from the city of Sioux City. This is from Captain Ryan Bertrand for action. This is approval of inter-local agreement between the city of Sioux City and the county of Woodbury, Iowa, twenty twenty-three burn justice assistant grant, grant program award. You don't look like Captain Ryan.
No. But he stopped at the, at my office this morning and just asked, uh, me to bring this item in front of the board. This is just the annual, uh, burn grant that we normally have. He, there's one original that has the signatures from the city. That's this one here, and then there's a second one. Uh, this one will go on to, um, the D E. A. Task Force. And this one would be just a copy for the city and us to have. But if I could approach and give you I believe they require the auditor's signature and the board chairman's signature, if I'm not mistaken.
I'll move it.
First by Radick, second by Taylor. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero.
If I may just, is that something that you can sign in his? Okay, I'll just grab it.
Thank you. Item eight from secondary roads, uh, county engineer Mark Nara includes a approval of a certificate of completion of project parent M two nine nine with Dixon Construction of Correctionville, Iowa for three hundred fifty thousand, one hundred eighty dollars and ninety-four cents.
The work has been completed in compliance with the plans and specifications. I recommend, uh, approval of the certification on project completion.
I'll move it.
A second motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is approval of contract and bond for pavement markings for twenty twenty-three with Dakota Traffic Services for one hundred and one thousand, ten dollars. Sorry, one hundred and eleven thousand, ten dollars.
Ten dollars, yes. Um, I recommend approval of the contract.
I'll move it.
Motion by Radick, second by Vittenger. All those in favor say aye. Post say nay. Passes five zero. Item C is to accept the pickup truck quotes in return of the county engineer for an award recommendation.
I have bid tabulation sheets for the board if they wanna track them as I read. Uh, we did receive three bids. Uh, two of them were submitted properly to the, uh, office of the public bidder. The third one was, uh, submitted to our office by fax from, uh, one of the dealers. First bit, bid, uh, bid is from, I believe it's Woodhouse. The bid is for fifty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars. Less a six hundred dollar concession, so that would make it, uh, fifty-four, six thirty-five. Less twenty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars for our trade. Twenty-one, six sixty-five for the trade. Hundred and seventy-nine dollar dock fee. Total bid, or net purchase price, thirty-three thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars. Thirty-three, one forty-nine. Next bid is from Keneffler Chevrolet.
Are these for gas or diesel pickups?
Gas. Uh, these are, uh, this is for one of the foreman trucks for the district four foreman. They're three-quarter ton crew cabs. Occasionally, they do haul around staff and, and, uh, they always have a hundred and ten gallon fuel tank board for winter for fueling, uh, our motor graders and other equipment that's out on the roads. The one thing Jensen didn't tell me, I'm, they didn't tell me which brand. I'm assuming it's a Chevy, but I'm, I'm not sure. Pardon me? Next one is Keneffler. So I I'm, I moved back, uh, because I was gonna read the brand for the, uh, Keneffler, which is, of course, a Chevrolet.
So this is Jensen that you're reading?
No, I'm, I'm now reading, Jensen didn't tell me what brand of pickup.
Okay.
I think he means Woodhouse didn't tell you.
I'm sorry. No, Jensen Motors. I'm sorry, it was Jensen, not Woodhouse. Jensen Motors of Lamar's. And that could be a Ford or Dodge or a Chevy. I don't know which it is, because they have all three. Our county policy is we allow a dealer to bid if they have a footprint within Sioux City or Woodbury County. In this case, Jensen does have, uh, that footprint with their, uh, dealership here on, yeah, in in Sioux City. Okay, so it was, again, I'm sorry, it was Jensen Motors, thirty-three, one forty-nine net bid. Keneffler Chevrolet. What he's given me is a total bid, no trade, fifty-three thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars. Five, three, eight, forty-nine. Jensen has a number of issues on here that I'll have to take a look at during an analysis of the bids, explaining how they ended up where they did. They were hesitant to give a, uh, price on the used vehicle, uh, because of the timeframe between delivery of the new truck and the award of the bid. One of the options that we'll be studying is whether we wanna accept a trade or whether we wanna sell it at auction also. The, uh, final one is from Berry Motors of Danbury.
So did Keneffler have any trade or anything on there? It was just?
They did not offer a trade in at all. They, uh, expressed that they would be willing to quote us a trade price at the point in time where they're ready to deliver the new truck, where they'll have a better idea of the final miles. Most of the dealers are telling me we're ten to twelve months out for delivery. Unless, uh, Berry has something in here that we're not aware of with, uh, having a truck meeting our spec already on the way. Keneffler does not have one on stock. Berry Motors, um, bidding an F two fifty crew cab. Purchase price fifty-three thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars. Trade in on unit forty-six, seventeen thousand. Net purchase price thirty-six thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars. Thirty-six, three seventy-two. Just for the board's information, our current truck has about a hundred and seventy-three thousand miles on it, so. In spite of the very good, uh, trade-in values, this is one of the reasons we're looking for, uh, you know, a newer truck for those foremen who are out checking our roads in the middle of the winter, so. I recommend the board accept the bids and allow the county engineer's office to investigate the, uh,
So moved.
Second motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's one more up here for you, Mark.
Oh, thank you.
Item nine from the board of supervisors, Mr. Taylor and the county assessor Julie Connolly. For information, this is information regarding the taxation of solar as a utility for information purposes. Information is mentioned twice in the wording there. It's definitely for information.
Just, just so you know. So thank you, Mr. Chair. This agenda item, I really want this to just be something that clears up any confusion regarding taxing utility scale solar. So I think we've had a good deliberative debate over the past two months, um, and we added solar for private usage. But as we look at utility scale solar, I think several misstatements or misassumptions have been stated, and some of those have even been from my lack of knowledge. So I just wanted to, in a research with Julie and Dennis Butler, as well as Department of Revenue, what is the actual revenue that would come in? How is it taxed? And so I, I really don't want this, um, discussion tonight to be whether or not it's merited and whether it should go into A P. Or not, but just to be, uh, very informational, that's why it's mentioned twice, to, to make sure that we know, um, from a taxing perspective. So Julie, uh, appreciate your being here and us accommodating you wanting to be at the end of tonight's agenda.
Special request. I don't know why you requested that.
So would you tell us a little bit, um, of what you learned?
Sure.
That you can give to us. Thank you.
First of all, the solar that we're talking about is not for personal use. It is the solar farms that are being sold back to the grid. When a solar farm sells back to the grid, it automatically becomes state assessed. It does not qualify for the five-year exemption. Um, I've been in contact with Roland Simmons from, he's the head of the utilities department at Department of Revenue. What happens is we build a solar farm. Where that land is, whether it's leased or owned, that becomes state assessed, along with everything on it. So once the state picks it up, um, it'll break it into two parts. First, it'll, um, assess the land and the buildings, and they will tax the solar farm at three cents for every thousand dollars of assessed value. Now, that money goes back into the state's general fund. It does not come back to the county. What the county gets is the kilowatt usage. Now, the formula for the kilowatt usage is point zero 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 six times the annual generation kilowatt hours. So the best example is down at the Port Neal Solar Station. They generated last year, their taxes were four thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars in utility tax. Now, if I were to assess that land as ag, um, in real estate, uh, the taxes would have been two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight. So that would have made a difference of one thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. That's just one of the examples. Granted, ag properties, um, they will vary in value due to the type of C S Rs and what type of crops they produce. But on an average, in Woodbury County, um, ag land is usually about, um, one thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars an acre. So I hope that clears up some of the questions or if there's anything else I can answer.
One of the things, Julie, that we talked about a little bit in preparation for this agenda item is you pulled together approximately twenty-five hundred acres of parcels in Liberty Township.
Yes.
From an ag perspective, that yielded approximately how much?
Let's see, the property taxes for just random properties in Liberty Township, um, came up to be ninety-four thousand and sixty dollars in property taxes.
Okay. And I believe that we looked at, um, some potentials of projects that were around twenty-five hundred acres. If you scaled them, um, a hundred megawatt solar project taking up about six hundred acres of land, uh, we figured out it would be about a hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty.
Yes.
If we scaled it up to twenty-five hundred acres, five hundred and four thousand. Now, I realize, in having some further conversations, that 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 may not be perfectly scalable. So it could be anywhere from three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand. And on its face, that isn't to say this is what we therefore then should do, but to just say that this is, at least in comparison, there is a taxation, um, through solar that is is favorable. Whether or not that's the right thing to do, not, not tonight's discussion, it's simply information. Because I was under the assumption maybe it'd be a lot less, maybe it'd be equal to, um, maybe it'd be more. And there is an argument to be made about the, the spending in terms of ag inputs and the local economy and so on. So I just wanted to make sure, and we have, or you have, uh, thankfully provided a Center for Rules Affairs taxing guide on all the, the minutia of taxing solar, so, thank you.
I got a question for you, and you may not be able to answer it, but it's my understanding that it's like roughly seventy-six acres that Mid-American owns down there where their solar farm is, that the state currently assesses that at like a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Do you know how they got to that number? Yeah, when, I mean, that land is probably worth twenty to thirty or forty thousand dollars per acre.
Right, that's the market rate.
Okay.
We, um, for us, we don't assess ag, ag land as market. We simply look at the corn suitability ratings and the type of soil types. That hundred and sixteen that you're seeing now is not what the state is using for assessment. That's what it was when it went to
Okay, sure. Does that make sense? I had a question about that, and I wanted to get some clarity. So thank you.
And one last thing. Whether it's industrial, whether it's ag, whatever zoning does is completely irrelevant. Is that correct?
Correct. Um, the assessor will look at the use of a property. So you may have something that's zoned commercial, but there's a house on it. I'm not gonna assess a property as commercial. I'm gonna assess what the use is. Now, if I have a vacant lot and I don't know what's gonna be done with it, then I'll look at the zoning. But for the most part, I have to look at what that property is used for.
And I think that's really helpful, because I was under the misassumption, and this maybe shows my ignorance, that there was a rollback factor in a formulation that may be beneficial for one versus the other, and maybe that's why certain so I just think that's helpful to kind of have publicly stated, um, whether anybody does anything with that information or not. It's just good to have the facts, and I appreciate it.
I have a question. Um, the, uh, you know, you know, the comparison in the agenda item as far as, you know, the five point three five times yield as far as tax revenue, uh, moving to solar from, uh, you know, the example twenty, you know, two thousand, five hundred and three acres in Liberty Township. Is that, uh, you know, a good baseline for the, for the whole county, for all the ag land? Is there a lot of fluctuation? I mean, 'cause we don't know where these projects will?
Basically, you're gonna have to find out how much they think their annual generation of kilowatt hours are. That's the only way you're gonna find out the taxes.
As far as what the property tax revenue is for agricultural land. We kinda have a, a baseline in here.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, no matter what township.
It's gonna vary per township, depending on the different levies here and there. It's gonna vary slightly.
But not
But not a great amount, no.
You kinda pulled those at random, the twenty-five hundred, three?
Yes, I just picked Liberty Township, 'cause I thought that's where our solar farm is now. And I thought I heard that that's the question of where the solar farm might be. So I just picked twenty-five hundred parcel, or twenty-five hundred acres, figured it out, looked up what their taxes were gonna be. And then, um, their levy there is twenty-one dollars per thousand, so that's how I came up with that.
Thank you.
And I do not know when the jail's gonna open.
Thank you for Claire. Thanks for being here, Julie.
Sure. Would you please?
Yes.
Leo Yolken Salix?
Yes.
One of the questions is, like this three cents?
One of the questions is, like this three cents per thousand.
Yes.
Who will be responsible to pay that? Will the landowner pay it, or would the state assess it?
The state would assess it to the solar company.
To the solar company?
Yes.
Okay, so evidently, like the buildings are considered the panels, probably?
Yes.
Okay, okay. On, and I'm just using your figures.
Sure.
So, Westwood School District is in Liberty Township, and they would get forty, forty-six point three-nine percent of this. That's what it is on the tax statement.
Okay.
Is that in addition to what they would normally get? I mean, will they have extra money to spend in that district because of that?
No, because you're going to be taking the ag land out.
Right.
So they're not going to get that tax now. Now, they're going to get the utility tax.
Okay, so, right now, they're getting ninety-four thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Which breaks their percentage of that is forty-three thousand. They're going to get, if it's solar, it would go five hundred and four thousand. They would get two hundred and thirty-three thousand from their percent.
Oh, from their percent. I see what you're doing.
So, do they get that to spend somewhere to like remodel a building and stuff, or is it, are they robbing Peter to pay Paul? You get what I'm saying here?
Yeah, I think, Leo, you're You're getting into some school finance formula, right?
Right.
Where when they get that, because there's a per pupil allowance from the state, sometimes even when you generate additional revenue, you would think, now we can do this with our schools, and we can beautify that, and then all of a sudden, yeah, and that's a school finance formula that is way above my pay grade. But I do know that that sometimes is the deal, where you generate more tax revenue, and you think this is going to be a good boon and windfall, and then at the same time, you're adjusted downwards from the state. And, and so I think you're on to something. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if you know, Julie, but that kind of gets in the school finance formula.
And, and I have read articles, so, and I think one thing that's interesting to note is that you said it's based off of generation. And so, over time, obviously, they will generate less as they become more inefficient. And so, you're right, schools would, over time, take less, but there have been instances in the state of Iowa where they've had like a, say, a hailstorm destroy panels, or they self-combust and start on fire, where they don't generate any electricity, and you could have an instance where there's a year where there are not, there isn't any generation, so then therefore there's no taxes. So that would also be a hypothetical situation that, like when the deratio came through, it wiped out some solar farms that they could not rebuild, and so they lost out on significant damage.
Did it wipe out solar farms? Because I didn't hear about that.
What was that?
It did wipe out solar farms, because usually they flatten in forty seconds, and it
Yep.
Nothing happened in Missouri, I mean, in Florida, when I was there with that.
And I know that, like out in Scotts Bluff, Nebraska, they had a forty-acre site that was hailed, or destroyed by hail this summer. So, just like all of us, we're subject to Mother Nature.
Okay, I want to follow this, what will happen, like the county gets forty-four point one percent out of Liberty Township. So, it'll be the same thing for you. The state is going to take something else away from you that you won't get that extra money. So instead of getting forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, you'd get two hundred and twenty-two thousand, three oh nine from the generation tax.
Right. So the state's taking a portion that they would normally not be entitled to by having solar, because the state doesn't get any sort of formula right now off of us, right?
Right.
And so they would get that, and then based on the point zero 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 six formula, we're generating, but it's still
You'll get two hundred and twenty-two thou-
It would still be more than we would otherwise be getting, if you look at any comparison. And, and I'm glad you're bringing something up, Leo, because I want to make sure that I'm
You got to check that stuff out.
Right. I'm glad that you're bringing this up, because I want to clarify now, even though I was hopefully helpful in putting this together. Right now, on the ninety-four thousand sixty from the roughly twenty-five-hundred and three parcels.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is that, that ninety-four thousand sixty what's due to the county, or that's what's due total after the county has taken only its share? Do you see what I'm saying?
That ninety-four sixty is a total tax bill, so that's going to be split five ways.
Okay.
All to their percentages of the levy.
Okay. So if we get something like forty-four point one percent to the county, then we're looking at something like four thousand, or I'm sorry, forty-one thousand, three eighty-six, right? Roughly?
Your forty-four point one is forty-one thousand, four eighty.
Okay, so that's off by ninety-six dollars. Okay, you're, so
I did this at home.
Thank you, Leo. So, give me the number again, Leo?
Pardon?
Give me the number again, if you would.
Forty-one, four eighty.
Okay.
That is forty-four point one percent of five hundred and four thousand, one oh four.
That actually was of ninety-four thousand sixty.
Of ninety-four thousand, sorry.
Right, right, right.
Of ninety-four.
Okay. So, go back to the five hundred and four thousand, one hundred and four dollars that, let's say, we're getting from the, the solar, if we take it times point zero 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 six. We need to divide that up between the school and the county as well.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Okay.
And the other bodies.
So, in that case, if I'm following, if I'm picking up what Leo's laying down, then we are at two hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and five.
He's got a different calculator than I got.
Forty-four percent, roughly, of five hundred and four thousand.
Forty-four point, forty-four point one.
Right? Okay, yeah. But what did you come up with, Leo?
Two twenty-two, three oh nine.
Okay, so, two twenty-one, I, I trust you more than me. Two twenty-one, or two twenty-
Two twenty-two, three oh nine.
Two twenty-two. So, bottom line is, either way, the county would be receiving by solar two hundred and twenty-two thousand, roughly, and by having it left there, as it is right now, about forty-one thousand, okay? So still about that, five times, but we do have to recognize that the, the schools and the other taxing bodies and WIT and so on take their share.
That's right there.
Okay.
See, this is the breakdown right here. That's all figured here.
Okay.
I guess I'm saying, so will you have extra money, or won't you?
We would. We would. Right now, as it is, we would be having forty-one thousand, four eighty.
Yep.
If it was just left as it was.
Yep.
If we went the other direction, we would have two hundred and twenty-two thousand, roughly, still, again, about five times.
Yep.
And that's neither here nor there. This isn't
I know, I know.
Yep. But I just think it's helpful to know those facts. Rollbacks don't matter.
Mm-mm.
No, and I thought that we had this five-year exemption. That's not true.
Yeah.
Et cetera. So, thank you for the math.
This comes from nineteen thirty-seven.
That's good. I'm an English teacher, so.
Nineteen thirty-seven did this.
Nice. Thank you.
It's good discussion. Thanks.
You know, it would be interesting. I, I might call a few of the legislators and see if there's any intention to maybe tax wind or solar in the future, like they've allowed us to tax wind. Because wind is not on the
Utility replacement?
Yes, utility replacement tax. So, because we were able to pass a resolution that allowed us to tax it as a structure, so I wondered if they have any intentions of doing that with solar in the future that might benefit the county. It's worth asking.
I got to make a comment. Today's taxes average about thirty-seven, fifty-eight an acre. That's what I have to pay. Under the solar, it would yield the county two hundred and one forty an acre every year. We don't make that kind of profit farming it, and you're getting it as a tax from the generation of electricity. It's just, it's really, putting those figures out there, it's, I didn't, I didn't realize this, I was looking at about a couple hundred acres or two hundred and thirty acres, and all of a sudden, I read the packet, and I saw these figures, and I thought, whoa, you know, this is, this is different. But, there again, it's just, it's a taxation figure, and I like what you're doing here. So, we'll look at other things later on.
Thank you, sir. Did you, did your assessor have anything else? Appreciate the clarification. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, well, the next step on, on this, even though it's not related to the agenda item, it'll, you know, kind of depend upon the other entities, the zoning and Board of Adjustment to get through, but we want to remain cognizant of it either being September timeframe or December, just so we can respect everyone else who, all the farmers who will be involved in the discussions.
And I think that Leo knows this too, harvest is coming quicker than we think, or terrible dry, and so there may be a chance that harvest may start in September, and we can move from December to a November timeframe. So I think the sooner guys get in the field, the sooner we'll all be done.
I would chuckle that out in Florida.
Well, you'll have to fly back.
We'll let you call in.
We'll let you call in, yeah. But no, it's, it's, it's drying fast. It's smaller yields. It's going to come very fast. So, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely get to it, so.
Great. Very good. I'll move on. Item ten is reports on committee meetings.
I had certs, and we, we got a new state grant for the bus wash. So, that will probably get completed shortly after then the new building. We initially had a grant for the bus wash of something like two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand, but like so many things during COVID, it ended up costing over double that. So, we did not pursue that grant and use it. We went back to the state, rather than giving back the original three hundred thousand dollar grant we got, asked if we could get another three hundred thousand, which they said yes to. So, that was grant application approval, so we should be getting that now, six hundred thousand to do a bus wash when the building's completed. We bought our insurance for the new building, which was, I think, something like eleven times the amount of coverage of the old building, but it was only like a few hundred dollars more per year. So, that was good news. The ribbon cuttings for everybody's calendars and maybe for a notice of potential meeting Friday, October twentieth. That's not just certs, but I believe it's SIMCO as well. And because it had FTA funds, there will be, I believe, the governor and some senators potentially planning to be there. From noon to three is the timeframe, twelve-thirty is the ribbon cutting, and then after that, that one to three timeframe, it's open house, but also Kurt Miller's retirement party, since he stayed on to help complete the building. So, that's just for your calendars, if you'd like to be there. That's all I got.
Couple things on emergency management, emergency services. I know you guys all got the email about the emergency management field day that's going to be in Cherokee, September fourteenth. I, I know that they've been trying to get some of the local farm bureaus there as well. Ken Reynolds is going to be there, and so I'm going to try to make that. We'll see what, what harvest is doing, but I think if one of us could be there, I think that'd be a good thing. Secondly, in the past, Supervisor Taylor and I have talked about some of the work that we're trying to get done out to the Climbing Hill Emergency Services Building. One of the expensive undertakings was getting the building tuck pointed. I was able to talk to the Grand Meadow Heritage Foundation up in Cherokee County. They had their, their school tuck pointed here two years ago, and it's about double the size of the Climbing Hill Building, and I was able to get the contractor that did that. Scott Mitchell reached out to him. He came down, got us a quote this week. We sent the information over to Kenny. Kenny says it's a very good company, and so we're hoping to bring an agenda item for it maybe next week. The bid to do that was well below expectations, so it's always good news to hear that. So, that is all I've got for committee reports.
Any other reports on committee meetings? Item eleven, any citizen concerns?
Item twelve, any board concerns? I didn't bring this up last week, but the, the Summit Carbon Pipeline and I U B hearings are going on in Fort Dodge. They were, I believe, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday last week, and they've been going, they started again this week. Last week, we had two Woodbury County residents testify, Amy Crowe from Sergeant Bluff and Charles Ollering from Sergeant Bluff. I have not watched Charles's testimony, but Amy's is on YouTube, if you want to watch that. She does a fantastic job, and I think really brings to light the complicated issue that we have in Woodbury County with all the things going on down by Port Neal, and all of the roads, railroads, utilities that, that they're going to have to go through, as well as people that live in that area, farmers, that kind of stuff. I was watching some of it today, and they had a gal from Wright County that, it's been fascinating to watch these hearings, because it's, every county's different with what they have going on. In Wright County, they have two hundred and thirty drainage districts. And, and they want to run this, this pipeline right through it. So, I mean, it's been, it's been fascinating to watch. I, I appreciate everybody that's taken the time to, to go down there and testify, and, and I guess it'll be interesting to see how it shakes out, but I think they're a long way from done. So, you can go to the I U B website, and they have a direct link to watch the, the live feed, and would encourage anybody to, to do that, so.
They must have like a thousand trustees.
Oh, yeah. They talked, she talked about how that county was almost entirely a swamp, that it's just glacial holes all the way across it. And they, in the twenties and thirties, they started doing all these drainage districts and putting all these tile in, and the problem that they have is that a lot of their tile is so old, that if you start to disrupt very, very many parts of it on a big scale, that it can shatter and vibrate and break miles and miles up or downstream from where they're working. And so, they're freaking out. And it, it was, it was fascinating to listen to, to her testimony, and I listened to, there was a family just across the border here in Plymouth County that testified last week, and they have, I think it was like seven acres of, of native undisturbed prairie on their farm, and which I don't think there's very much of that across Iowa anymore that they want to run the pipeline through. So, you know, I, so I, I think there's, it's just been enlightening watching this, this whole thing unfold. Fortunately for the folks at I U B, I think they've got a lot of days of testimony ahead. But anyway, it's, it's, it's worth tuning into every once in a while, if you can, so.
If you're looking to get on their Board of Trustees, you have to be a resident now that you retired from Grant Township. I just wanted to make sure that that was stated.
All right. Good to know. Good to know. Being a chair of a drainage district in Wright County, though, would be somewhat diluted. You have, pun intended, but you have so much, so many compatriots there.
The, the gal from Wright County today, and I believe she's involved with their county government in some capacity, if she's maybe the auditor or recorder, she does something. But anyway, she got the, got a big round of applause from the crowd. They were, they were talking about something, I know how they got onto it, but she made a comment about how farmers have setbacks for CAFOs and things like that, and she asked, what are there any setbacks for this, this pipeline? And the I U B guy said back to her, well, we're not sure. We would get that out of Summit during their testimony, and she said, well, maybe they should have gone first. And then the whole crowd erupted in a round of applause. So, I mean, there's, there's just a lot of emotions in these hearings. You can definitely hear that from, from the attorneys, from the, from the folks testifying, from the crowd. I've, I've got a lot of good information, just tuning in. But anyway, it's on I U B's website, direct link, and you can tune in. Or the follow-ups are on YouTube, so.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other board concerns? Okay, we are adjourned.